All right. Okay, everybody, it's five o'clock. I'm going to call the Village Board of Oregon to order for Monday, August fifteenth. And Candy, can we have a roll?
Vilo.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Van Campen.
Here.
And Lunch.
Here.
You, Jenny.
And I need to call to order the library board meeting. Can I have a roll call?
Bergstrom.
Yes.
Will.
Here.
Goplin.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Steta. And Santuli Shuda.
Here.
Right. And I also, I should have mentioned, Carleen Beshin is excused from both the village board and the library board.
Okay. So we're on to number three, which is business items out for discussion and possible action. So three, I think what we're gonna do is we're going to do three A first for review and potentially approve plans and specifications for a new library building project. So we'll, both boards are gonna have to vote tonight, so we'll do the presentation, open it up for discussion between us and the village or the library board, and then we'll do the same thing with the budget, so. Who do you wanna?
So, since I've figured out it's easier for me just to write down what I wanna say, I'm just gonna kinda read this and go through some things for you guys. And so, first of all, good evening. We know it's been a winding road, but we're really happy to be meeting with you all tonight and in this next step of the MOU. The site plan and renderings are included in the packet. They've been approved by the library building committee as well as the plan commission. And the feedback from the plan commission was addressed in the site packet that, or the site plan that you see in the packet. And as of last week, we've received fire department approval of the plans, which was one of the conditions from the building, from the plan commission. And we're currently investigating adding overhangs on the single-story portion of the building, as well as we've included the brick on the lower portion of the building as an alternate for bidding. So I know that was something that was requested. Also, there's a green roof that's on the side of the building that's an alternate, because the solar panels will take up the lower roof, which at one point had talked about being a green roof that will be where all the solar panels are. And so, I know you guys have seen the exterior a few different times, so we'll kinda move on to the floor plan, which is what I'm very excited to show everybody. I don't know that a lot of people have seen it. We feel that we've arranged the spaces to best take advantage of the views to the park, and we tried to reduce solar gain to the building by placing rooms that are solid-walled and tend to need less exterior views on the side of building that will have direct sunlight most of the day. So that's why when you look at the floor plan, you see more of the conference rooms, the meeting rooms, faced towards the parking lot, whereas the views and some of the seating areas are faced more towards the conservancy. As you come in, can you show the floor plan, maybe? I know it takes a minute. That'll kinda help. So, just to kinda orient you, the bottom side is the front entrance from the parking lot, and then the backside that's kind of, I don't know, shaped, yeah, up there will face towards the conservancy with the patio on the back. And so, as you come in the front entrance, you'll be greeted by library staff at the front door and see the donor wall to the right with views to the exterior as you come straight in. The lobby opens up to the second story as you walk towards the collection space, and the lobby will function for self-checkout, pick-up for holds, and a place to find a new book or sit and take in the views. As you turn left from the lobby, you'll have the single-story space, where kids will be able to enter the children's space through a child-size archway from the feature wall of the lobby into an area we've created that will allow kids to attend a storytime in a multifunctional room, which is up in the left side on the green there, or explore for new books as loudly as they want to without disrupting the adult patrons. We'll be picking furniture with a vendor after the building, after the building is out to bid, so the kids' area will have furniture meant for kids, and other spaces as well will have furniture meant for what is there. There's a sensory room and a study room for parents that might need a place to work, but also would need to keep an eye on their kids. So those are the block of rooms that are kind of to the south there, and the mechanical room is the other gray room to the side. If you go right from the lobby, you'll head towards the dedicated teen space and the maker space. The teen space is designed to give the young adults a sophisticated area separated from the children's and adult spaces. It includes study rooms and computer access, as well as seating facing the park and the teen book collection. While the teens are at school, the space will be able to be enjoyed by everyone. The community room is meant for library programs to be held, as well as for groups to be able to meet and hold events, similar to the Sue Ames Room at our current library. The space is being designed so the public can access the meeting room and the restrooms outside of library hours, but still leave the rest of the library secured. So there's also the family, or the single-stall restroom we were able to fit in there too, which I know was a concern, so that was able to be included. The second floor of the library, which is the next sheet in the packet, will house the adult collection, quiet reading room, and additional computer access, allowing for an area away from the more bustling kids' area, but still with views into lobby to be able to see what's going on. Staff will have work space on both first and second floor, so the, ah, sorry. Staff will have workspace on both the first and second floors, so the connections to the librarians that we feel at our current library will exist in the new space. So you can kinda see right as you come up the stair on the second floor, that first orange will be a reception desk or a check-in desk, a space to meet some of the staff, which is really exciting. I've had the privilege of being on both the library board and the building committee, and have seen all of the hard work, thought, and staff input that has gone into the design. We have the approval of the building committee. Last Wednesday, the library board voted unanimous, unanimously? I can talk, I'm sorry. Including village trustee Bashin, who can't be here tonight, to approve the site plan and the floor plan. And we're here tonight to vote again with you all, and to share the excitement we have for this project, and to ask for the village's approval of the plans, so we can move forward to the next step of building and bidding and then building the library. We're excited to have questions and discussion. Thank you.
So Jenny, can we see some of the outside, too?
Mm-hmm.
Please. That's all right.
So this is the front view. This is the one that we're looking at adding the overhangs over those windows to kinda tie it all together. This rendering was done before that request of the building committee. And this is, if you look at the area on the right side, up higher, that'll be the potential for the green roof that we've put as an alternate for the bid. And that's the second-floor space that the staff or that the adult collection will be able to look out, and then the maker space will be in the lower area down there. And the community room is at the front, but again, you can see like those are spaces that the projectors and things, you wouldn't necessarily want a lot of bright, direct light, and so that's kind of why the windows are a little smaller on that face. This gets to turning the corner and getting to the back area. And this is where the views really start to open up into the conservancy. So this'll be a lot of seating spaces. You can see in the farther distance, that's the kids' area on the far side, and the second floor is the adult, and then the teen space is on the lower side there. And then this gets to where the patio for the backspace. And I guess I wanna point out that, I know it looks green, but we're worried more about the building, so most of the landscaping will be the restored prairie. And where the path is, we'll have a way to be able to be mowed on six feet each, I think it's six feet, eight feet, whatever Jeff needs, to be able to maintain the pathway. That'll be turf, but the rest of it will be more restored. And then there'll be a space with some mowed near the patio for the staff to be able to have outdoor programming. This gets to the children's area and the story room, so you can only imagine the kids sitting and looking out the windows and enjoying their time staring outside, and hopefully listening to Miss Kelly as well. And then this is the side, that's the mechanical space, as well as, we'll have both a drop-off as well as a place to pick up. We found during COVID that that was a really important thing for the library to be able to do, is to hand out books if we needed. And there's still a lot of patrons that really like that ability to not have to go into the library and to be able to pick up their books, so we have that option on that side there. And this kinda shows you the Hardy board option. And so, it, I know sometimes the rendering shows up a little yellow, but it's actually a wood look Hardy board. And those are the spaces that the alternate is for masonry. And then the other side is kind of a style, board and batten, that's the correct word, and it's a little bit darker, a little grayer, so it shows up a little better when you look at the pictures versus the renderings. Did it do okay, Brett? So are there questions on the exterior itself?
So Jenny, I have one. The overhang, I think, are they all on all six windows?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And what about some of the other things that the plan commission brought up?
Yeah, so I included the information, I don't think Elise is here yet, but I did include in your, the memo in your packet, there was the motion made by the plan commission with the contingencies that they had. So one was the fire department approval, which has been achieved. One of the comments was regarding the entrance to the site and making the entrance pathways the crosswalk symmetrical, so that has been updated and is included in your plan here. The widening of the book drop loop was widened at the suggestion of both plan commission and Jeff Rao. It can accommodate a Ford F-150 and a dump truck, but we did widen it just to make it easier for larger vehicles to maneuver through those loops. And then I think the additional comment was, we added that mowing, the turf next to the pathway, the walking biking path, and then also the sidewalks, because Public Works tends to do that as a best practice to maintain a neat and orderly appearance by those paths and make them accessible. And so those were, those were the site plan comments. The exterior building comments were to add those awnings or canopies, as you might call them, above all those windows. Our architect is exploring that and has that ready to go. We just didn't wanna show anything here until we were absolutely certain that that was what we wanted to do, and we just haven't had the chance to review that yet in our weekly design meeting. And then the final recommendation from plan commission is that they would like to see masonry, but they understand that it's a budget issue. So they said, you know, if the budget allows, and so we've responded by putting that as an alternate on the bid package, in hopes that if the bid day and our estimates and everything come out favorably, that we would be able to select that option and upgrade to that, that brick, that James Hardy wood portion of the building, to upgrade to brick.
Anybody, anything else, Jenny?
Not if you guys don't have any other questions on the exterior. Do you wanna see some of the interior, interior renderings?
Sure.
I can go through those. And these make me very happy, not gonna lie. And so, this'll be, kind of be your first experience with your librarians when you walk in the front door, and then they have a lot of nice workspace right behind there, and it also connects right to where the book drop is, which makes it a lot of functional space for them to be able to get the books and be able to sort right away, which is really nice for them. The next one, this is the view to the, best view that leads to the back patio, as well as looking down into the teen space and the maker space. The maker space is super cool. And the idea is that those whole, the circles you see will actually be a place to put whatever you've created, so you can put it on display and be a part of the library, which is pretty exciting. And this is the other view from standing at the maker space, looking back towards the lobby. And then again, it's just an emergency exit. To your left will be those study rooms available as needed. And this is the view from the children's space. Again, the furniture is just for a placeholder. It'll be bid out and designed after we get the project out to bid, but it'll definitely be exciting for the kids, if you can imagine getting to sit and look out the windows and play. And then, this is the second-floor space. Jennifer likes to tell you, not all the walls will be white, Brett. But this is, this is the adult space, and on the right side further up is where the quiet reading room will be. And so you can see that you really do get kind of that feeling of getting to be a way, but also being a part of things, which I think is cool. And this is just the view the other way into the left. You can see right as you come up the steps, you'll be able to have that contact with your library staff. So if you have questions, they're right there to help you out. And then computers and access will be on the far side, so there'll be computers and a bunch of places to work over on that side as well, so.
All right. Do you wanna open, should we open to both, both boards?
Yeah.
Anybody's got questions, or?
Questions.
So, anybody? So I'll just make, I do like the overhangs added. I think it sort of ties the two pieces of the building together, and I think it's a nice little design element, so.
It's a great idea, Randy, thank you.
Who else?
Amanda.
Yeah, Amanda.
Yeah, I just wanted to let people know, too, that somebody commented to me about the EV chargers, that those had to come out for budgetary reasons, but we haven't given up. That's something that can be added back in later. We're looking for other funding opportunities, so don't take that as a, they won't be there. We're trying. Just wanted to address that.
So Amanda, let me just say something about that. Months ago, we had a call with Alliant Energy, and because this is a new sort of building, we'd mentioned the library, and they may be interested in helping us get something, so we should, we should follow up with that.
See, we did talk to them in quite a lot of detail about solar, probably about two years ago now. This, that, North Main Street wasn't a site for that program, and because of the site size and building size, that same information would apply in this location. However, they do have an electrical vehicle charging program, I think up to $1,500 for certain commercial and governmental type buildings, so that's something that we can explore further. It's a rebate program that they do have available.
And actually, Jennifer, when I talked to them, they, they may be interested in doing it as sort of a pro bono, because of the new building.
We like that a lot.
We like that.
Yes.
That's wonderful.
Yeah. So we should follow up. I have some notes.
Thank you, Randy. Thanks, Randy.
All right. Yeah, Derek.
I just have a question, as far as some of the alternates that you have, did you wanna go over that as part of the design or part of the budget?
Either way.
We can do it either way, whichever you prefer.
I guess, and I'd be interested, my fellow trustees' opinion on this, I noticed that one of the deduct alternates was removing the walking biking pass systems as a bypass around the library. I would like to see that removed from a alternate, just before, just because as part of the public feedback that we got, one of the things that most of the people that didn't necessarily want the library out there, really wanted a way to get around it without necessarily having to go by the parking. So.
Sure. We, we have as an alternate, so that we can get the cost identified, so the intention isn't that it's gonna be removed, because we know that it's a, it's a, it's a definite must-have, but if we can list it as an alternate, we can identify the value to that line item, so.
Thanks for the clarification on that. And I guess the other thing is, as far as building prices and trends, what have been, we've been seeing in the last few months? Would there be any benefit of waiting to break ground six months or so, or is that not something that we're seeing?
I don't think that's the case yet. It's gonna take quite some time for people to work through their backlogs before we get to that. And the concern is that after the, the first of January is kind of a traditional time for everybody to throw in their increases, and I think we're hearing people kinda licking their chops waiting for that, and there's definitely gonna be some big increases that come out. So at least we would be, you know, before that happens. So I think it's a, it is an important piece of timing to get the bid before the end of the year.
And historically, the Engineering News Record does a analysis of construction cost index and building cost indexes, and since 1969, there's only been one year where construction costs actually went down, and that was from 2008, 2009, when there was that recession. So then, you know, that was just a little blip, and then it went right back up. So if you look at historical data, of course, you know, with the pandemic, things are not really predictable in the way that they might have been in the past, but historical data indicates that costs will just continue to either stabilize or could potentially increase. So that's what we've been seeing from the construction industry. People are projecting continuing inflation.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for all the clarification on that, I appreciate it. That said, and I understand that it is just kind of a placeholder for getting pricing, I'd still like to see that, that just removed even as a thought from a deduct, or a deducted alternate. And like I say, it's something I'd like to get more feedback from my fellow board members on, if they, if that's something that they'd like to see or not.
What's our thoughts?
I guess I defer to Jeff and library people, just because, you know, if they're looking to put a, it's a complicated thing to put a price on. It's not just laying it out there, there's landscaping involved, there's lots of costs that, that wouldn't be specifically identified if we don't call it out somehow. That's, at least that's my understanding from being on the building committee and all of that. I don't think anybody intends to take that out. I would not support that. I mean, that's, that's like a total worst-case scenario. But if it helps to quantify that for people, I don't, I don't see the harm in leaving it in, 'cause I don't think it has a lot of support for taking it out. We, we all know that that was part of the agreement for putting the library out there.
And we can, certainly, whatever the village board wishes to do with that, we can, we can follow that. I will note that when the bids come back, the village board will see the outcomes of the bids, and would be able to provide any feedback on the outcomes of the bids before the library board is able to word the contract. Per the MOU, the village board has to authorize the library board to word the contract, so I just wanna make sure you're aware that you will see the bid outcomes and would have the ability to provide feedback on that as well at that point, in addition.
Yeah, Derek.
I appreciate that, and, but kinda going to back to Amanda's point, and I can appreciate that it's not anyone's plan or intention to pull that from the project, but at the same time, if it's not anyone's plan or intention, I would like to see it removed as even a possibility to be, to be pulled from the project, because really, that's what the alternate is, is a possibility, worst-case scenario, let's pull this if it doesn't work.
So.
It, it doesn't matter one way or the other to be, for the most part, the reason it's in there, honestly, Derek, is 'cause I've had other village board members, I've had other building committee members all ask me for how much that's gonna cost.
Sure.
And that's really all we're trying to identify, is how much it's gonna cost, so it's not us telling you, it's, this is how much it's gonna cost, it's a contractor telling you how much it's gonna cost. We have no plan whatsoever to do it, but I just, we're trying to get the information that we have been asked for, so.
So, so Martin, this is a question for you. So ultimately, would the village board have the authority at some point to put it back in if it, if it didn't work?
You, you would have to approve taking it out. I guess another example is that we're going to have an alternate for our surveillance camera system in the building. The reason for the alternate is because I need to identify the value of that work, so that when we, when we end up having a contract with the general contractor and we make changes to that system, we use that information on bid day to manage the project going forward. So, again, you guys will have the ability to approve what alternates are accepted or rejected, and you'll have the ability to approve the final contract amount before we go to contract, so.
All right. Yeah, Derek.
If it makes it easier, then keep it in. But ultimately, I'd really caution taking it out, if that's even, even a thought as an alternate. I wouldn't wanna necessarily see the feedback that you receive from the community on that.
I think we're on the same page, Derek, I think we're good.
All right. Any other comments from our village board? Jenny, do you want to see if your folks have any?
Do you guys have any comments, anything you'd like to, to share? I know we've been through it a few times, but if there's anything you wanna share, let me know. John, anything? You good?
Is this thing on? Just that, I'm really proud of the work that the construction committee has done, ours, and our architectural firm is stellar. They've been professionally supporting us every step of the way, and I can't begin to thank them enough. However, the point needs to be made, we haven't built it yet. We're here to prove that we can move forward, and that's the goal and the objective tonight, and whatever it takes, we need to get shovels on the earth. And so, that, that's my objective, let's get this going.
Thanks, John.
All right, so, so Jenny, you wanna get a vote first?
Can I have a motion to approve the building site plan and floor plans?
So moved. By Goplin.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
All right, same, same motion for the village board. Jenna?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And second by Amanda. Any other discussion from the village board? Okay, see none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're good? All right, we can go to three B.
So the second part that the memorandum of understanding requires approval of is the project budget. So I'm gonna start talking about the project funding, which I think many of you are familiar about, but I just wanna highlight that before we talk about the actual budget itself. So if you look at the bottom of the last page about the library in your packet, we have the project funding sources. So we have the village borrowing, which you're all familiar with, and then the, the, we've pulled out the line item for the solar geothermal, your extra support, just because that did have a contingency, that if additional grant funding is available, then that would offset or replace that, that amount, depending on how much that grant funding could be. We also have donations from the community, and I'm just excited to say that we have over two, 2.09 million, almost 2.1 million donations in hand, that's in, in our bank account from the generosity of our community, which is incredible. So that's individuals, families, organizations, neighboring townships, community organizations, grants, like all sorts of different funding sources. It's, you know, nine-year-old kids, you know, nine-year-old people, the whole, the whole gamut of the community has really rallied together and support this project in an environment where we have lots of important community projects going on. I think this is a testament to how much the community cares about this project moving forward, and just really express my appreciation to all the people here that have supported the project through their, their donation financially, but their donation of time, or their volunteering. We have pretty much everybody in this room, or close to it, has supported the project in some ways, so I just wanna say thank you to everybody here. We also have some additional pledge commitments that some donors have outstanding. We offer the option to make donations over multiple years. In a typical climate, that allows people to be a little bit more generous if they can donate over multiple years instead of all in one year. Right now, we have, that's shown, that's 92.5% of the total pledges there. We budgeted a little bit less, just in case, you know, a portion of the pledges are uncollectible. We hope we'll be able to collect all of them, but just to be safe, we did write that in per the MOU. We total, just, it's because it's amazing, it's just $2.28 million, which is incredible. So just recognizing the community of Oregon overall, not just the village, but also residents from neighboring townships that are part of the community that wanna see this happen. We also have impact fees and interest, so the village has impact fees for various municipal services. The fire department had one recent, you know, until recently, it's pretty common for new buildings, and so the village has an impact fee for the library project. And so that is the amount that's been collected, and most of that's been collected in the last few years. Once the village borrowing takes place in 2023, after that point, any additional impact fees collected will go to the debt service, so will be applied towards the village borrowing, the debt service that you've taken out. The last thing is the focus on energy credits, and Focus on Energy has a rebate program for energy incentives, and so Jeff's been able to project that out based on similar projects, and so we're estimating that to be about $30,000 in incentives. So that puts us at project funding about $13,421,597 in committed funding for the project, and so then the budget equals available funds. Of course, we can't spend more than we have, and so those are the funding sources that the MOU said that we were able to count, and so that's what you see there. I'm gonna pass it over to Jeff to talk about the project budget and answer any questions you have about that. I think, I think we already covered the other items with the alternates and things that I wanted to talk about, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff Fein, who's our owner's representative for the project.
All right, so what we have is just the list of all the expected expenses that we're gonna have through the course of construction. There's, the big number is what's left over, basically that $10,817 number is the balance when we take our, the funds that we have available, and we take out the rest of our expenses that we're projecting, that's what's available for our general contractor on bid day. And we did just complete our design development estimate, which we just went through at the end of last week, and we're in a much better position this time around than when we did our SD estimate. And, you know, there's lots of things that we're kind of trading in and out, but I can tell you that we are no longer over budget. So we're, we're projecting that on bid day, that we should be able to be underneath that $10,800 number, and, but we're still gonna have a list of alternates, both adds and deducts, available, which will be expanded more than the list that you guys have, once we can put a little bit more thought into that, so that we have the ability to adjust if, if necessary, to make sure that we can, we can bring you a number that works when we wanna approve the contract for construction. And I guess, instead of going through all the rest of the line items, you guys can let me know if you have questions or comments on how we came up with the cost, the overall cost estimate.
Jane, let's open, open it up.
Do you guys, the library board have any questions on the budget? Do you guys, the library board have any questions on the budget? I know I went through it the other day.
Jeff, could you just take a moment and talk about the conden- contingency, so everybody's, um, aware of that particular line item?
Sure. So we're, we're holding, uh, for the owner's purpose, outside of the general contract number, that five hundred thousand dollar contingency number. And I know that from past experience, everybody looks at that money and says, geez, we could use that money for all kinds of things. And, and, you know...
I said no.
The answer is, yeah, eventually, maybe we can. Uh, and that's another reason for us having the add alternates that we have in the bid, so that we've got identified items that we, that we can add back if, if we have contingency left over, or we can add other things during the course of construction. But the first thing that we need to do is we need to, uh, dig the hole, figure out what's underground, deal with, deal with poor soil, deal with water, deal with contamination, deal with whatever we find out there, and get through all the unknowns of the project. So, and in my experience, we want to get through, you know, construction of foundations and get the structure up, and then we'll know, uh, how much of that contingency that we might have left over. So, um, that's, that's for us to manage during construction, so that we have the ability to deal with the changes that are coming from the general contractor.
How about village board? Anybody? For Jeff? Jeff, as long as you're up here, this is unrelated, but site-specific. Facebook went crazy because they saw a truck. People thought we were destroying pu- the park. Can you address it? You, you know what I mean, the boring for the thermal?
So, so the, uh, we finally got the drill company out there to do the test boring for the geothermal. So they went out and they drilled the four hundred and six-foot-deep boring, until apparently the drill, uh, went into this, like, big open cavern, you know, four hundred and six feet deep below the earth, which is kind of interesting that there's a big space down there. So we're going to want to keep our wells short of that, but, um, they were going to see if they could drill up to five hundred feet. We had talked about three hundred feet for our wells, but maybe our wells could be three hundred and seventy-five feet or, or something like that, so we can, um, reduce the number of wells. And I guess because the, the water, I mean, the ground is basically saturated, because we're, we're in Oregon, it's very conductive, meaning that as the, as the water gets, um, moved through the geothermal system, because there's that moisture in the soil, it, it'll, it'll help with the conductivity of the, the heat. So, um, it was all good results. But yes, we aren't, uh, you know, we, we haven't started quite yet.
If the cavern's full of oil, we can...
We're going to fund the project. They want us, right?
We're going to double the budget. Unlimited funds.
So we're building on a single?
No.
No.
All right. Any other questions for village, from village board members on the budget? Yeah, Amanda?
Uh, not a question, just a kudos. Nice, nice job. Because I think we all had a panicky moment when it seemed like we were way over budget. You guys did it. You got it down to the right numbers, a lot of hard work, additional fundraising, uh, so that's great.
So, we're going to hold our breath until bid day, we don't want to jinx it.
Sure, knock on wood.
All right, Jenny, you, you're up, you want to take a vote?
Can I have a motion to approve the construction budget as presented?
So moved?
Is there a second?
I'll second, Gahlin.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
All right. Village board members, any want to make a motion, a second? Mike? And I saw Jenny's hand first, so we got a motion to approve the construction budget. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you're set.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you guys so much. This is a great day. Thank you.
Oh, I do. Can I have a motion to adjourn the library board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't think that's allowed. Thank you.
All right, well, wait us, just a second here, people clear out.
Just about.
All right, we'll get this.
Congratulations.
We've got some minutes.
Okay, just give me one second to...
Good evening, this is Keith.
Hi Keith, this is Candy calling the Village of Oregon, so we are just calling you in.
Hey Candy.
So, you're live.
We'll take care of these minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Wait, we're not, we're not quite there yet.
We just have a couple white housekeeping items to figure out, and then we'll, Randy will give you the okay.
All right, our village board meeting continues. Approval of vill- uh, village board meeting minutes, we'll take the first one, July twenty-seventh, two thousand two-two. Derek, second. Amanda, okay. Any discussion on those minutes, anybody? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's take August first, twenty twenty-two, take a motion from Jenna and Derek. Any discussion on those? All right, see none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Jacobson and Bealow, that was?
Yeah.
Number six, public appearances, comments, communications, items are for discussion, possible action. So we have, A is review analysis of tax increment financing request from JAD Partnership LLC for proposed Bodie House Brewing Development on Concord Drive. Did I say that right? Okay, all right. So Keith, Keith is on... Keith from Ellers.
Keith, you're still there?
Good evening. Yep, yep, I'm, I'm still here. Uh, Keith Dell with Ellers, I'm a municipal advisor, the village's financial con- consultant. And what we ultimately did was review JAD Partnership's requests for tax increment financing assistance. Because whenever a developer is requesting some dollars, uh, from the public, we just need to make sure that we're not over-subsidizing, uh, the amount that we're providing, if providing anything at all. Uh, but what we do here is we go through a performa analysis. And what this means is we're looking at the developer's budget, we're looking at the developer's performa, just to confirm that all of their revenues are in line with what we're seeing on other retail developments within the area, and their expenses have been accounted for and considered as well. Based on that analysis, the requested amount that the developer is seeking was supportable for the project. A few things that I did want to note, um, was that the financing for this project seems to be in line with what we're seeing on other projects. The total development costs are in line with what we're seeing on other projects as well, um, albeit on the higher side. But they're really on the higher side related to the soil remediation work that they have to do on the retail development site, but also the retention pond cleanup and improvements that they have to do, uh, to the north of the site as well. Those costs, uh, push their total development costs on a per-square-foot basis towards the higher end. But that's ultimately why it's, uh, leaning towards the higher end. Their developer fee is in line with what we would expect. They are deferring a portion of it. So as far as, uh, at closing, uh, the developer would receive four percent of total development costs. And with this, we typically see anywhere from three to five percent. And then as far as their rents go, they're charging a little over twenty-five dollars per square foot for the two tenants that would, uh, be in this retail space. And based on the, the market in the surrounding area, um, they are on the higher end of that market, uh, rent range, going from nineteen dollars a square foot up to twenty-seven dollars per square foot on, uh, new retail developments. So with that, we also look at the available tax increment, because ultimately, we can only provide, uh, the tax increment that's generated from the TID, but also what's generated from the project, because we're looking at that value add. So we worked specifically with the village's assessor to determine what that estimated market value may be. And what we ended up getting was a one-point-four-million-dollar figure for the retail development. And so we look at that based on, uh, property taxes paid and what can be generated in tax increment. So in total, like annually, uh, this project would generate about, uh, twenty-seven thousand dollars of tax increment. So from there, um, we applied an appreciation factor of point-five percent, uh, ultimately an inflation factor on the value. So each year, that one-point-four-million-dollar figure will increase by half a percent. It's our assumption for the estimated cash flow. It could be less, it could be more. Uh, but it is our assumption that we are using to calculate what the total amount of tax increment could be generated from, uh, the TID over the remaining number of years. So this is actually located in the village's TID number four, and there are nineteen years remaining. And this is with, uh, the two, three-year extension that the TID has requested and was approved by the joint review board. So over that time, we're anticipating that the TID will generate about five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Now, from that, not all of the increment will flow to the developer. The village will retain a portion of that. And what we're proposing in front of you tonight is that eighty percent of the annual tax increment generated would go to the developer to pay down a municipal revenue obligation note. And twenty percent would be retained by the village for administrative expenses, uh, or any other project-related expenses that the village may have, um, that they want to get reimbursed for, or future expenses. I did attach in the memorandum a breakout of what that might look like as far as the future value of what the village would collect over that time. And it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars over nineteen years. While the developer, their total amount would be around four hundred and twenty thousand dollars from eighty percent of the available tax increment. But since we're looking at a future revenue, a future cash payment from a rebate effectively on, uh, taxes, we have to look at the present value of that, because the developer will need upfront funds to construct the project instead of the future cash flow that he's not able to monetize. So we're, we're looking at the upfront capital to construct the project. So when we take that four hundred and twenty thousand, the developer would be able to monetize that privately through a lender at a six percent interest rate to get a total amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars upfront. That's principal amount to construct the project as we, uh, have it proposed in front of us today. And so there would be that interest rate component to the municipal revenue obligation note that the village would essentially provide to the developer. So in total, the future value would be about four hundred and twenty thousand. But in, in reality, the developer's only getting about, uh, two hundred and thirty-five thousand of that for upfront project costs. And then the remainder would be going towards interest to the private lender. The last thing that we look at is return on investment, um, because we look at the available increment, we look at the numbers within, um, the performa, but we just want to make sure that we're not over-subsidizing the project based on the recommended amount of assistance. And typically, on a retail development, in the year of stabilization, a developer would be looking for anywhere from six to seven percent yield on cost. And yield on cost is calculated by looking at your net operating income before debt service divided by your total development costs. And so with the tax increment, uh, with the assistance from the city and year of stabilization, and based on their total development costs, they're only achieving a five-point-seven percent, um, YOC, which is slightly below where most developers, uh, need to be in order to secure the capital, uh, to attract the capital, to move the project forward and for it to become financially feasible. But the other thing that we want to take a look at is, um, not just that one instance, that stabilization, but we want to look at that, that return, that yield on cost over the term of the projected TIF assistance, which would be about nineteen years. And over that time, when we look at the yield on cost in each year and average that out, it's about seven percent. And so most developers want to be within that seven to eight percent range, um, when public assistance is involved over the life of the, the TIF assistance. So with that, it, it's more in line with what we would expect to see within the industry. Just for grins, if there was no TIF assistance for this project over the nineteen years, uh, he would most likely be closer to five and a half percent, six percent is an average. Whereas in year of stabilization, he would only be at four-point-eight percent for yield on cost. So this just confirms that the amount of public assistance that the developer requested is warranted, and it can be generated from within the TID over the remaining number of years. So with that, I can stop and open it up for any questions that, uh, board members may have for me.
Yeah, Amanda?
I had a question about, uh, what, what does it mean when a developer defers part of their fee? Did you catch that?
Great question. What, what was the last part of that?
Uh, just, what is it, what does it mean when a developer defers part of their fee?
Yeah, so they're not being compensated partially for their upfront time and energy to get the development project together, to secure financing, to secure the things that they need, the entitlements to move the project forward for construction, and ultimately, uh, completion. So they're getting the developer fee from future cash flow instead of at closing, when they get the financing from the bank.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
All right. So, so Jamie's up here. Jamie, I do have a question for you. So, just for clarification, the, the, um, the bike park is not part of this. Am I, am I correct in that?
We ran into this, I mean, that's when we talked last, we talked about whether or not we actually could generate real increment and whether or not it was more of a quality of life versus a, uh, actual something that could be subsidized. So this is, uh, and, and Keith agreed, he was like, no, you can't really use that. We had kind of mentioned that, whether that would be a plausible way to do it.
Right.
So what, and I guess I don't, I, I don't, I can, I actually would like to circle back to that, because I do have something I'd like to talk about that, but I don't know if that involves him. So if there's any more questions for, for Ellers, that might be.
Okay, yeah, we, we can circle back. Yeah, Mike?
So the, the real value that's coming out of the tax increment is, is over four hundred thousand before the village starts getting money beyond the payback of the, of the original amount loan? Is that correct?
So, partially. Um, if you look at the, the chart on the last page of the memo, if you look at the column that says tax increment, so over nineteen years, we're projen- projecting the TID to generate a little over, uh, five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So from there, annually, you're categorizing it by, um, village retained increment that you're using for administration and project expenditures that you have. And then eighty percent is going to the developer. So in total, it's going to be about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars that ultimately would go to the developer as a benefit for this project to secure the, uh, lending mechanism that they need to construct it. But then the village is also receiving a hundred thousand dollars roughly over that nineteen years.
Okay, thank you. So this, this would extend for the entire li- life of the TID, that?
Correct, yep.
All right, any, anybody else for Ellers? I, I didn't mean to jump ahead.
No, you're...
Just wanted to make sure that the board knew what was included and whatnot, so. Anybody else for Ellers? Okay. How about for Jamie? Jamie, you wanted to circle back, you want to say something before we ask questions for you?
I, I'm guessing it'll probably come up during the next phase, but we can do it however you'd like. What would, what would be the easiest way?
You could just, if you had some, something to add to the...
With the, the Ellers thing, yeah. So I mean, maybe I can help. So I actually go to a bank and borrow the two hundred and thirty-five thousand, it doesn't come from the village. The village isn't giving me anything, uh, they're just saying that they'll give me the, yeah. So yes, but it does, so it's essentially the six percent he was talking about with the interest. That's what that will cost over the nineteen years.
Okay. So Jamie, tell, anything else you want to say about the project?
Yes, so, uh, with, so when we, uh, looked at the project and tried to do the pump track, the one other benefit of a pump track is they actually are, um, they don't... the one other benefit of a pump track is they actually are um, they don't use a ton of space uh for like, if you, I actually, it was just in the Wisconsin State Journal, they said an article about the Aldo one, if anybody saw it on Monday. Anyway, they, um, so there's a big article about how they did it, and it does fit in a small footprint, which was our goal. But losing that uh potential um revenue source, the second idea that we had, and uh this is similar, um, we would like to do a skills park, like a loop. Um, it takes up a little bit more space, and so were this to actually be uh something that we could do, we would actually have to use a little bit of the village's land on the north side of your stormwater detention pond, like uh. So that is right now just the, the stormwater detention pond, so it's not really being used for anything, and it really can't be, just like ours really can't be. But if we were to connect them, we get an almost eight-hundred-foot northside um line. Now, what we would do is we'd actually hire a company that would come in and actually design a trail system that would go back through there. And then they would have offshoots where they would have uh features. So you build in um, I think that I threw some pictures. So like, it could be everything from like, you have berms and you have uh, you can have step-ups, you can have all sorts of different little features. But then you have a, like, one way is easier and one way is more challenging, and so you can get more elaborate things. Uh, this is actually behind, uh Saris did this on their property, so that is at the Saris Bike Park, so that's private. Um, you have to sign a waiver if you want to go ride there. But you can see, and this would be the same gentleman that I've been talking to. So he actually used, and I think the next one might actually be, yeah, that's what it looks like from on top of that down thing. So you just have these little trails that people can ride on. And essentially, what we would do is we'd do it as a loop, and that way you could just hop on and off uh and uh basically ride the trails. It's kind of like a little skills park, so you put in kind of adventure mountain biking.
Okay.
So that would be the alternate that we could do. Now, we can do that under the, under the current situation that we have, like, we would actually kind of do that. A lot of it would be done ourselves, so it would take more time. Like, we'd probably have just a, the initial and then slowly add to it over the next couple of years.
Okay. So Jamie, just one, pause one.
Mm-hmm.
Any, anybody else for Ellers? We can cut him loose. He's on the phone. Anything else for Ellers? All right, Keith, we're done. He didn't have to, so he doesn't have to hang on, sorry. All right, Jamie, what else? Anything else for us?
Uh, well, I mean, how y'all doing? No, I'm just kidding. Uh, I, no, I mean, that's really kind of where we came to. I mean, I knew that, that um, we kind of split it that way because of the bike, the, the, the park. I mean, I, it's pretty, the, I mean, as the library gentleman just said, you know what you're dealing with when you're dealing with Oregon, you're talking about soil borings and what you're getting on earth. So I mean, I feel like that portion of the, the explanation that he gave is, I mean, pretty rudimentary for people who are building in, in old farm field.
Okay. Other, any questions for, for Jamie? Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, um, the, the trails and pictures that you have in here are uh interesting. Uh, I'm wondering, does it take a lot of landscaping? Like, how much does it cost to do?
Uh, it's far less expensive than doing it where it's asphalt. Um, we are going to be, I mean, part of the Ellers thing, I don't know if he mentioned this, and I don't know if you told them. But so we have a cleanup budget, so we'll be cleaning that whole area up. And so when we clean it up, it'll be a perfect time for us to kind of do some grading. Um, and so it'll, we'll try to kind of work together. I mean, I, you know, as Jeff and I have been talking back and forth, like, what he needs out of the pond and actually lowering the pond and fixing those problems, you know, maybe moving some fills, some trees, and as we kind of do those, we should be able to get, because these guys are really creative. I mean, like, when they go to Quarry Ridge and they build them, they have to work around everything, you know what I mean? They can't cut down trees, they just make the trails. And then that becomes part of what you're, comes part of the topography, you know what I mean? You go around things, over things, you just kind of make it flow.
And how, how does that work when it, like, rains? Doesn't the dirt kind of come on, I mean?
Yeah, so you do some compacting on the actual trail part of it, but when, where, where you really run into problem is ruts on anything that actually has a lip. Uh, the thing that you go off, okay, don't, don't, terminology. Uh, so any, if you're going over like a, like a tabletop, it will uh work its way to a point where you start to get these deep ruts. So now what they do is they put this kind of like turf on them. Um, it's almost like an astroturf, but just on the lip, and then that way it never, and then you put it over it. So that way the bikes, even if it's wet, they don't really destroy them. Now, you really shouldn't ride a trail if it's really wet, but if it's slightly wet or it had rained earlier, at least it gives them a lot more life. And then they can do things where, and if you saw in that picture, there were some wooden ones. So this is Snake Hollow. Um, that's, so what they do, oh, yeah, you're right there. It's kind of in the background, it's littler. So what they do is they actually build a wood that you ride up to.
Oh, okay.
And then the wood is actually the jump, and then they build just the landing because that is far more viable over time. Like, they just, I mean, you, you do have to rebuild them. I mean, it does take some level of maintenance, but you try to make it as, as lang- long-lasting as possible, yeah.
And, but the, like, the dirt, the runoff is what, more what I'm thinking of, where there is exposed dirt um that would run into those retention ponds and.
Well, I mean, we, you're, you're really trying to keep it as trail, as much trail as you can, if you do want to build like an edge. I mean, yeah, it's not a um, like, that obviously is a different, I mean, I, I think it's more along the other ones where you just do it that crushed limestone or gravel, and you actually just kind of compact it, and it, it stays pretty good. I mean, it doesn't move a ton. It, it, I mean, you'd really have to kind of try to push it somewhere.
Okay. Yeah, no, that makes much more sense. I was seeing the dirt tracks. And thinking, all that dirt is, you know, a couple rain, good rains, and it'll all wash the sediment into the pond that you just cleaned out. And I'm thinking, how is this going to work, so?
Well, they'll both be downstream of those ponds.
Okay.
Yeah, they couldn't, they wouldn't be contributing to the ponds at all.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, Jenna?
So, um, thinking about the new version of the bike situation that you mentioned, um, I, I know that's not the right term.
It's great.
Um, it's my interest, if I, and if, if this is too early in the conversation on that, please let me know. But I thought our land wasn't going to be developable because it was wetland, so I'm one, I'm just wondering how extending it somewhat onto our, onto that village land right there is going to affect the wetland and if we'll have to do any, any additional mitigation to make sure that the water is flowing.
As Jeff, we're across the berm of it, so all of this, so there's a huge berm on the village, eh, you know, that's right to the south of there. And all of that goes there, I mean, how tall is that, like, eight, ten feet?
Yeah, eight or nine feet, yeah.
Yeah, so it's about, and so all of this would be on the, the, the north side of that. So any kind of, I mean, anything that we did with that would basically be on that. So it would not affect the stormwater retention pond or the, or the amount that it could hold in a, in a, in a weather event.
Yeah, Derek?
Yes, my question would be and concerns with the track as well, uh being as it is inching into village property. And we're mixing bicycles and beer, and does that open the village up to any potential liabilities there?
Well, we're not, well, we would not be uh in, trying to get anybody drinking and riding on the trails. There is a bike shop there, and uh, and there is a, but yes, we, I mean, it's kind of, I mean, the long-term goal with this still, and, and I've talked to Jeff about this, is to actually give this all back to the village at some point, once we kind of get it all how it works. And then it would just be a public bike park path. Um, the, the, the premise of it, I mean, we will have, obviously, it'll be kind of similar to like the skate park where it's kind of like a do-this-at-your-own-risk kind of thing, you know, like, yes, you know, we realize that riding a bicycle over trails can be difficult and you can crash, you know. And we'll require helmets, and you know, we'll require that things, and we'll have things on there stating, you know, do not ride while, just like everything, you should never be riding your bike while you've been, you know, especially if you're doing something like this. Uh, this is honestly more for kids. Um, I, I'm sure there will be adults that do it, but my, my main reason for doing it is, I mean, I take my kids mountain biking all the time, and they like it, and they will do it for a long time. And I think with all of the apartments, I mean, we have a hundred and fifty people live in a block and a half to the north. We have fifty-five that are just over there, and I mean, we are surrounded by multifamily, you know, apartments and complexes and everything else, and not a lot of things for them to do. And so honestly, I mean, with the bike shop being there, do I want them to come ride and maybe have their bike looked at? Yeah, I do. But I also, do I want them to come ride so they're not playing video games? Yeah, I do. So, I mean, and yes, we would have disclaimers, like, do not do, but again, you can't, I mean.
Throw it out there.
Yes, exactly. No, I, I agree with you. I mean.
They have that one guy that had one too many and decided that this is a good idea.
This is the best time I'm going to hit that. No.
All right, Amy, yeah, Phil?
I wonder if uh it could be shown on the map, what part of this is village property? What part of this path, this trail would be on the village property?
Yes, but, so the village property is over here.
Okay.
And, and this right now currently is private property owned by Jamie, but it's, uh, like we've just kind of talked about before, this is kind of a mess over there. When, when that whole area was developed, this was supposed to be managed by the HOA, if you will, for that area. And it, there's, it's never been put in place.
Yeah.
So by working with Jamie to have this cleaned up, working more efficiently, the pond working better, um, we would then look at um possibly taking it over as the village, so it would all, all be village property.
But on the onset, it would be owned, what, partially by the village and partially by Jamie? Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, there'd be a period of time, sure.
Uh, I guess I would ask Matt how that would work.
Yeah, well, I'm just kind of wondering a, a couple of things. Um, is, is this trail system and how the two property owners would work together? Is that um, is the expectation that that needs to be part of the TIF agreement as well? Does it all afterward, that could be handled separately?
Yep.
Okay, so um, that was one of my questions. Um, and so Jeff, does the village, is the village property owned? Does the village own it in fee simple, or is it just an easement? What do we have? We own all right title and interest in that?
Own it, yes.
We own that, okay.
And we actually own, own it, we don't, we don't have any loans on that at all.
Yeah, well, sometimes, uh, okay, so it's village.
That question came up last time, right?
Exactly.
So the village owns that parcel, okay, and then the other parcel is owned by the, Jamie, either you or the entity that you operate.
Yeah, the entity, that's me, yes.
Okay, and so your vision here is that separately from the TIF agreement, uh, and it's not critical to your project moving forward, this whole bike, this is just gravy, right?
This is just, I think it would be awesome.
Okay, it'd be nice if it can happen, but, but it can be handled separately. So um, what I'm hearing is uh, it's a little complicated. Would, was your expectation that you would, it would just be like an agreement, that the village would make its land a big?
Basically, at the beginning, yeah, it would be something similar to, like, you would allow us to build trails on this as long, you know, as long as we're not.
Kind of license agreement to operate your.
We would be having pedal bikes on it, like, it would be non-motorized, you know.
And how would, how would it be, is it, is it something that um?
Open to the public all the time, as long as it's not dirt, obviously. So we're not, it's not, the, no.
At no cost?
No cost, no. That's why we actually added a secondary trailhead, because I didn't want people to think that you had to come to my establishment to use it. So we had a trailhead on Park Street, uh, so people can hop on on Park Street and ride the loop.
And is the expectation that if, that, that we would in a single agreement address uh both stage one, where it's two parties owning two parcels with you putting this together and getting it going, would we also in that same agreement then address the ultimate conversion of that to village park?
Yeah, we could. I, I just, I think it, as a private entity, I have a little bit more flexibility with moving things around. And once we got to a point where we felt like um how the trails are designed, the upkeep, all those kind of things, where the village is like, all right, we're, we're okay with that, you know, we're okay with rebuilding a little bit of wood here and there, or putting up, you know, whatever they needed to be done, and we could have that, then I would give it all back, and it would.
And that would all be addressed in a single, that would be in the initial agreement, we'd lay all that out, how it's going to happen and when we're going to get.
I'd be happy to do that.
I'm just trying to figure out.
No, no, yeah, that, that's, that's what we had discussed, is, that would be the expectation.
We'll have an agreement that handles, obviously, Matt, the, the pond improvements, because that is part of the TID.
The pond improvements and the cleanup of the property, um, that, we have to drop the pond by fifteen inches to.
That, that's part of the original.
That's in our TIF agreement.
That's the agreement.
That, that, that we just got off with Ellers with. So the cleaning up, that was what uh Jeff was talking about when he was talking about originally. This was uh owned by the homeowners of Foxborough.
It was to be owned, yes.
To be owned by, whatever, so I didn't actually find out that it was my responsibility until, like.
About a year ago.
Yeah, about that. And then it was like, yeah, you got to fix this.
That was a fun conversation. Oh, really?
I think I was polite about that. I was.
No, you were, no, you were, that's, I'm seeing, I could just see you on the other end going, oh, all right.
So I'm hearing about, I'm hearing like two separate transactions that are in some ways related, but don't have to be.
Don't have to be.
One is whether the village, uh, you're, you're requesting TIF funding to make the, the, the bike and brew.
Yeah, that part, yep.
Project itself happen.
Yep.
And that agreement would include uh some work on the stormwater pond, Jeff, you're saying?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and cleaning up that other area.
Correct, correct.
That's one, that's one agreement.
Correct.
And then there's a separate agreement that you're interested in that deals with putting this whole bike park together, figuring out how it would be configured initially and how it would be structured so that eventually it would become a village park.
If they want it, if you want it.
Two separate things, okay. So that's, it's a little complicated, right? Um, I haven't done one of those before, so we'd have to figure out how to do it. There is recreational use immunity available uh under the law to both the village and private landowners who make their land available for recreational purposes uh without charging. So I expect there's a way to do this that would address liability considerations, but obviously, it's a little bit complicated in terms of putting it together. I don't know if there's a desire to do them on the same timeline or a desire to get one done, get the TIF part done.
Uh, well, the, the TIF portion of it is the essential part, because that is, we have been, because the switch to Ellers and then how I had to, you know, do it all, we're kind of been waiting on that.
That's the one you'd like to focus on first?
That is the one that we would like to focus on, because we're not going to start building this until next spring anyway, or whatever. So that would be the uh, that would be the immediate need.
Okay, and, all right, that's kind of answers my questions for now, but obviously, depending on what the board does, if the board says, authorizes us to go forward and work on both, then we'll obviously have more work to do on both.
Correct. Matt's just looking to pad his chart.
So, so I think Jamie's main reason here is for the, the, the TIF approval tonight. But Mike, you got a comment?
Yeah, just one quick question. The village owns that lot. Why do we own it?
Stormwater.
That was it?
Yeah, yeah, it's a big stormwater detention pond.
And, oh, the whole thing is. Um, is there a wet one where that trail is looked to be put, or is that on dry land?
Uh, I don't, there's been no analysis done out there. That would have to be looked at.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so we're, I guess we're, we heard Ellers, we heard from Jamie. We're looking for whether or not the board is comfortable with a two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar TIF request. Amanda?
I'll make a motion to approve the TIF as presented.
Okay, can we get a second? Somebody? Uh, Jenna? Any other discussion?
So just to clarify, it would be direction to the village attorney to draft a developer's agreement consistent with the Ellers analysis.
Okay, then I'd like to make that my motion.
All right, and Jenna, you'll second that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then the other agreement, we can do, Matt, we can do, you want to do?
I would like to do that later, because I think it'd be good for us to have another meeting where I can talk to Jeff and Jamie and really kind of get my head around it.
No, 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 that was more of a, a whole.
The important thing is the pond and the, and your tip.
Right, and that's in this current agreement.
Correct.
All right, Martin, you're good?
Yeah, as long as, if the village's board is okay that we spend time working on it. I mean, if there's just no interest at all, it'd be good to hear that right now.
On, on the mic?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we do have a motion, a second, to approve a two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar TIF request to, for the Bodie Brewing Development. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, Jamie?
Thank you.
You're set?
Appreciate it.
All right, speaking of TIF, we're on to B, review tax increment financing application from C.C. Lane, Oregon LLC for creation of a new tax increment district and project financing for a mixed-use project at eight-thirty-one, eight-seventy-one Oregon Center Drive. Sixty units of workforce housing and commercial space. And I think these gentlemen look familiar to us. They should. Martin, do you just want them to jump in?
Yeah.
All right, guys, go ahead.
Sure, well, uh, welcome, thanks for having us. Sorry, uh, my name is Sean O'Brien, this is Lane Manning, I represent North Point Development, and Lane represents Streamlane Real Estate Group. And we put together a project that we submitted for tax credits last December. Um, kind of stepping back a little bit before that, uh, we were in front of this group in November, I believe, for a GDP approval. Um, we also, you know, obviously received approval at the plant commission. Um, and the, the board was also very gracious to provide us with some financial support, support of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars um through their Affordable Housing Fund to help move the project forward. We do have a, a quick PowerPoint. Um, I think what I really want to just focus on in the PowerPoint is just to, you know, remind everyone about the project, what it looked like. Uh, but we were proposing sixty units of affordable housing. Um, in addition, it was going to be a mixed-use project with about thirty-one hundred square feet of commercial space. Um, in the sixty units, we were going to have three buildings, one apartment building, and then two uh six-unit townhomes for a total of sixty units. And as we've kind of moved forward, we did apply for the tax credits from WEDA in December.
And as we've kind of moved forward, we did apply for the tax credits from WIDA in December. Um, ultimately, we were not successful, it's a, it's a scoring-based system. For all the competitive tax credits that WIDA has available, uh, they do break those credits into certain set-asides, um, and we applied in the small urban, uh, set-aside, uh, which was, um, the, the most logical choice for us to apply in. And some interesting things happened at WIDA this year, uh, with all the things that are going on with costs and interest rates. WIDA, uh, who typically will allocate all of their credits, um, and, and try to, you know, allocate every single dollar, held back a lot of their credits to kind of see what's going to happen in the industry between costs and, and interest rates. And so, um, when you expected in our set-aside, you know, maybe two to three projects to be, um, awarded, uh, these credits, only one was ultimately awarded. Um, and so, we came back to village staff and kind of, you know, gave a, a review of what happened, and obviously, there's still interest in, in moving this project forward in, in some way. Um, and if you can keep scrolling down a little bit to, um, uh, just to some of the renderings that we have, keep going, keep going. We'll just get right over.
It's the property?
Right, we'll stop there, that's, that's kind of the look of the apartment building. Uh, but we, we went back to the staff and said, yeah, we really have some interest in this project, we think it'd be a great project for the community. Um, you know, there are challenges right now in the market with, uh, construction costs, interest rates, but also, we feel like we could score better on our tax credit application if, if we had a little bit more financial support. So when we came, uh, to the committee last year, uh, we had reached out to the county, the county had awarded us six hundred and ninety thousand dollars in their Affordable Housing Funds. We unfortunately had to give those back, but we've reapplied, um, you know, for additional funds this year. We've also applied to the Federal Home Loan Bank of Chicago for, um, an AHP grant, um, and hopefully, we'll know about that in a couple of months. But the idea is to, to try to continue to move the project forward, to find financial support, uh, which would help us, uh, score better and more competitively. And so in discussions with staff, we discussed, you know, is there a possibility, uh, for creating a TID district for these two sites? Um, currently, these, uh, two parcels, uh, which haven't been developed, I think, for over twenty years, so it's kind of been sitting there as part of the, um, the neighborhood, a development plan for over twenty years, I think they're currently assessed, uh, for about a hundred and, uh, I wanna say a hundred and fifty thousand. They're paying less than three thousand dollars a year annually in real estate tax for the two parcels that they sit vacant. Uh, so we do feel like there would be some significant benefit to creating a TID district, um, there's some other flexibilities that I think that that also provides, maybe Martin would, uh, cover that, in his comments, but for this project, we do feel that, um, that that would help our, um, you know, our competitiveness of our application. And also in doing so, uh, we, we do believe that we would be able to provide, uh, this workforce housing at a more affordable, uh, rate to our tenants and kind of change up our unit mix a little bit to also help our scoring. And so as you make a project more affordable, obviously, it can't carry as much debt, um, because you're not charging as much in rent, and there, you know, you end up having a little bit larger of a financial gap. So, you know, you see our kind of sources and uses that we have up there, um, and we're just here to kind of, uh, discuss the, the option, the idea of, is there interest in, you know, with the village board of, of creating a TID, and, uh, what questions can we, uh, can we answer for you now? And, and see if this is something that would make sense.
Okay, so, so Martin, my, my understanding, I think, talking from you, this would be a, a creation of a TID just for these two sites, correct? Not a.
That's correct.
Not an area, okay. And what they're asking for is for us to create, or just to sort of go and see if Ellers?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, more of an investigatory, uh, phase, kind of what we just did with, with, um, with Jamie. Taking a look at, you know, their, their financials and seeing, does it make sense, can it generate enough increment to, to pay for itself? Um, and so just looking at that and, and then coming back and, and having that discussion.
And then we would, uh, uh, approve or deny a TID after that?
Based on that, yep, yep.
Alright, just, just so we all are on the same page, but other, yeah, Derek, go ahead and start us off.
I actually had, just go ahead and make a motion to authorize Ellers to conduct financial analysis for eight thirty-one, eight seventy-one, Oregon Center Drive, uh, TIF request.
Okay, and Phil?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Yeah, Amanda?
Not to be nitpicky, but does the village pay for that, or do, does?
No, actually, they, they currently have a cost reimbursement agreement with us, um, when they first started this project, yep.
Just wondering.
And, and I think, um, you know, this is one of our top priorities, has been, and we've seen them, I think we all liked their project before, it's a good project. And, uh, Amanda, do you have, or, I'm sorry, Jenna?
Yeah, uh, so the, I believe it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Affordable Housing Fund that y'all had received, and I apologize if it's in here and I missed that, but, um, if we are able to do the TID, would that go back then, and then you just go through the TIF process?
Yeah, our understanding is that we would have to reapply for the, um, the Affordable Housing Fund by not moving the project forward this year. Um, and our intention would be to not apply for that, um, again, and those funds could be used for, for other projects.
Yeah, Mike?
So, um, yeah, I have a number of questions, uh. A TID's entirely different than, than giving affordable housing funds, in my opinion, so, under what authority are we creating, would we be creating a TID for that's not a blighted area? There's been significant development around it, I mean, that's the only two-block area that's not currently, or half a block area, or however you define it, that's not currently being developed in that, in that stretch of land. What would that be, I mean, what's the legal basis for that?
It would be a, a mixed-use, uh, TIF district, as I understand it, yep, so there's different types of districts that can be created, and there are the, the blighted and the conservation ones, but this one would be a mixed-use, um, which doesn't require that.
So if we create the TIF, the TID district, and this project doesn't go forward, it's still a TID district, correct? So any other project that went forward in there would reasonably expect to come hit us up for funding?
Yeah, and it, we kind of talked about how we would time all of this and what that structure of an agreement would look like, I mean, we would have to take a look at, commitments from, from the developer before we create that TIF. If it didn't move forward, we probably could close it theoretically, because it doesn't have any costs or anything, so we would just go through the process of closure. So that would be an option too.
Oh, so we could close it?
Yeah, you can close it, yep.
Close it early if the project doesn't go.
Yep.
My guess is that what the sequence here would be, uh, assuming the, the financial analysis demonstrates that it's a workable project and the board ultimately decides to move forward, uh, my guess is there would be a negotiation of an agreement, and one of the contingencies in the agreement closing, and, and them closing would be that the TIF would be to be created, so there'd be an agreement negotiated, subject to the TIF being created, and then, and, and, and that would probably be moving on a parallel project, a path. Now, they still might not close, even if all that happens, because maybe something else might fall apart. Um, and so, yeah, you could end up negotiating the agreement, creating a TID district, and then finding that the project doesn't move forward, and then, uh, and, and then having to terminate the district early, uh, it could happen.
And the protection there would be that the village has the cost reimbursement agreement to, to cover those costs, they would pay for all those costs at that point.
So do you have an idea of how much money you would end up looking for in TIF assistance?
Yeah, so we, we, if you look at the projections that Ellers use, kind of doing the present value, we're looking at like a one-point-two million dollar, monetary obligation that would be filled by the TIF, but we would have the value to support that, and then we would be asking for a ninety percent of the increment, to be contributed to the project with ten percent going to the village. And, you know, I think, you know, to the point of developers reimbursing the village to, to pay for the, the study, um, do we need to have the TID created, you know, this year? Probably not, I don't even know if you can create a new TID, you might be, might be out of time, and it might not make sense to create the TID until the project's ready to go, otherwise, you know, you know, what's the point of, if, you know, creating the TID if, if the project's not, um, you know, generating that increment for two years because of, you know, trying to wade through the WIDA process, or, or getting, you know, getting the construction started. I think what we're looking for is just, you know, more of, um, a commitment to say, if your project does move forward and it's gonna be workforce affordable housing, uh, you know, we, the, the village will support the project, uh, you know, financially, and then we can work out the, the details of, you know, when does that actually get created down, down the road.
And you're looking at more below-market-rate apartments in your, in your new proposal, or?
Can you repeat the question?
You're looking at more, uh, below-market-rate apartments in your new ap- proposal?
So the affordability does get, get a, a little bit more restricted, um, and what I mean by that is, we had about twenty percent of our units at thirty percent CMI, forty percent at fifty, and forty percent at eighty, and to increase our score, we would be pushing some of that forty percent at eighty down into the sixty percent of county meeting income range, while maintaining about fifteen percent at, at eighty percent CMI, so we are making, um, you know, a good chunk of the, the, the units kind of spread across the one, two, and three bedrooms, uh, more affordable.
Good, thank you. In addition to, um, the money the village lays out, I'm not gonna oppose doing an analysis on this, but I just wanna raise the same caveat, I've been raising about two forty-nine North Main Street, which is the village is on the hook for the entire duration of this TID district, to pay for, our, the other taxpayers in the various taxing districts will pay for schools, they will pay for police, they will pay for fire, they will pay for everything else for the residents of this building until the TID closes in twenty-three years, which is a significant commitment considerably beyond the original ask of a million dollars, so.
Okay, so there is, there is a motion and a second on the, on the table to go forward with the analysis, yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, I have another question, uh, I'm wondering, is this a common thing to create a TID that's just for one project, is that?
It's not un, it's certainly not unheard of, um, I've seen it done, um, I've seen it done a number of times, um, so, it, you could do it, um. We haven't, I can't think of one we've done in Oregon, at least that I can think of, um, but, um, I guess that the policy question is, is it, you know, is it worth it to put the time and effort into it for a prod, to, to, for this project? That's the question.
And, and the same rules apply where, um, there's a half-mile boundary around each TID where anybody else can apply for TIF, uh, if they're within a.
But just for public, public projects.
Just public projects?
Public improvements within, if that was built into the plan.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to put that in the plan if you don't want to.
Yeah, what, I mean, what, what I'm hearing is that the only project that would be described in this plan would be the requested one-point-two million dollars in funding for this development. I'm not hearing that there are any public improvements or other projects that anyone has identified that would be funded with this TIF. Now, you're proposing a ninety-twenty split of the increment, or ninety, I'm sorry, ninety-ten. Somehow I got a hundred and ten percent, and, yeah, and so I'm not really sure what the thinking is about that ten percent, that would just be a reserve, and it would be ultimately cashed out at the end, um, I don't know what the value is of, I mean, maybe it'll, I don't know what the thinking is there, does it, is there a benefit to doing it that way versus just paying a hundred percent to close it out faster, I, I don't know.
There's the annual TID reporting that we have to pay for.
So, so there's some administrative expenses that you're thinking would be covered with that?
The library would also be within a half-mile boundary, so improvements to infrastructure related to that, you know, repaving of roads, parking lots down the road could be used with some of that TID funding, there's also the ability, say, down the road, some of those properties that are not developed right now, um, that are in the town, end up being annexed into the village, there could be an expansion and a update to the TID plan to include some of those properties, like the Up property that we just did a comprehensive plan amendment for, um, I'm not sure how the, all the boundaries could get drawn, but that's something that could be looked at in the future to expand.
Could we have Ellers look at those possibilities? Like, if there are other properties, we might wanna just from the get-go include in a TID?
Well, can we include properties in the TID that aren't in the village?
I don't think so.
Right, so I think that'd have to be done if and when those get annexed down the road, but it could be looked at.
There's not really a, a lot of opportunity to capture any increment in that area, because it's, it is developed, and when you're doing a, a mixed-use TIF, there is a limited amount of residential that can be in that TIF, so you can't capture a lot of that.
Okay. Alright.
Amanda, I asked the same thing, I didn't know if we could do it for two sites? But we can, so, alright, so there, the motion is on the table, for, uh, a motion and a second to approve the analysis, that's, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, you guys, we'll see what happens. Alright, we'll go to C, which is public comment, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Anybody here wanna speak? Alright, see none? Are we doing alright, everybody, or? Time-wise, a break, are we okay? Keep going?
Quick break.
You, yeah. Alright, let's keep going then, let's do, uh, approval vouchers in the amount of six hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven, and forty-three cents. Let's get a motion, a second, get it on the table, alright, Phil and Amanda? Alright, uh, questions? I do have one, Lisa.
Sure.
It's, um, one thirty-eight forty-one, National Mississippi River, six, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents.
That's a library expense, we hired the National River, um, National Mississippi River Museum do a program on sharks, they did two sessions for up to a hundred people each, um, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, um, so that, um, all of our programming is funded by the Friends of the Library, so the village acts as a pass-through, um, so that is showing the bill for you to approve, um, however, it's funded by the Friends of the Library, not the village operating budget.
Alright, just, just caught my eye, that one, different, anybody else, yeah, Amanda?
Uh, number eight-eight-four-five, that's a Vandewali Civic Fund, I was wondering what.
Yeah, I think, I guess that one, I think we, that was for work done for the senior center planning, we have them just, um, with the owner's rep, work, um, help us just kind of create the outline and look at some different examples, so I think we, um, Martin, if I'm remembering correctly, that's the
Thank you, correct.
Charge for the Civic Campus, a fund that has existed for a little while.
Right.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, Candy, you wanna take a voice vote on this one?
Sure, Jacobson?
Yes.
Which?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Blish?
Yes.
And Beal.
Yes.
Okay. Eight, uh, was this the first time we've had a consent agenda, Martin? Alright, let's see if we can make this work. Staff recommendation to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Eight A is change order number one for J.C. Park redevelopment, uh, general site construction, the amount of forty-nine, seven, seven, seven. Removal of concrete rubble and adjustments to Stormwater, routing and the VFW Memorial. B, well, you guys have them in front of you, B is the redevelopment, I don't need to read them all, so is it, Martin, is it A, is it A through D?
Yes, a single, a single motion.
A single motion, okay?
Moto program.
Alright, first time we're joining it, alright, Amanda, second, any discussion on any of them? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, alright, that's, takes care of four.
I love it.
Yeah, really quick. That's, I like those.
We'll pay you in high fives and smiles.
Okay. Alright, we're on to reports, uh, of committees, items offered discussion, possible action, nine A's Plan Commission, and, uh, I don't need to read, we've seen, seen both these probably twice, I think, already, ordinance number twenty-two fourteen, um, future land use map designation for a parcel, you guys can read it, two-family, mixed-use, you've seen that one, so we'll take, let's take, do we take both of them, do you wanna do one?
You should do one.
Alright, we'll do one at a time, alright, so let's take the first one, Phil, was that a motion?
It was.
Okay, Amanda? Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Alright, let's take care of two, ordinance number twenty-two fifteen. Posed? All right, let's take care of two. Ordinance number twenty-two fifteen, which is Liberty Park Drive, uh, two fifty-one Liberty Park Drive and Oregon Parks. We'll take a motion and a second. Amanda, make an emotion? Okay, can we get a second on this one? We've seen this one too. Jenna, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, ten, unfinished business. You're right, those consent things make things move along pretty fast. I like that. Eight, uh, ten, ten A is considered Tri-North Builders for owner's represent- representative services for a future senior center building project. Staff recommendation to authorize staff and village attorney to negotiate terms of contract for services with Tri-North. I'll just say both Mike and I and Elise and Jeff and Martin and Rachel and Jenny, and Jenny helped and we were all sort of all on a panel. We interviewed, how many did we interview, um, Martin, do you remember? Three people. And Tri-North was our, uh, people that we selected for this. So, do we need to say anything else, Rachel or Martin? We're pretty good. Stuff was in the packet as well.
Yeah, I can just mention, one of the things we really liked about Tri-North, not only are they local and most of the folks on their team that'd be working with us live either in the village or in the school district, but they also, for this kind of initial discovery phase, so the due diligence, the community engagement, the, uh, initial, no, your space needs analysis, the term escaped me there, um, space needs analysis. They have, um, folks in-house to be able to do all of that, uh, at least to get us started. So they have an architect, they have somebody who's, um, a community engagement specialist, and so we felt like there'd be a lot of efficiencies to have somebody be able to kind of, again, get us started in-house. They don't have the engineering in-house, so that would be something for, any of the due diligence work, if we end up doing soil growing, something like that, they'd be bringing somebody else on. But hopefully, um, can save us a little bit of time in having to do subcontracts for all those other people coming in. But, um, we're excited to work with them. It was a really nice team. We met with them a couple of times after the initial interview and, um, they've been really responsive to our questions, so looking forward to hopefully getting to know them.
All right, ready for a motion and a second? Approve? All right, Amanda? And who wants a second? No, Derek, I saw your hand for, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. B, review twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-two draft capital improvement plan. Martin, you want to take that one?
Sure. So I think this is the fifth meeting. We've had this on, I was hoping to have Ellers, uh, tonight to present the financial management plan, but I think they were triple booked and they have, uh, a lot of clients who are in the same phase as, as we are right now. So there's not really much, uh, to change from, from the last meeting. There was a couple of minor things. The police department had some changes to their TASER purchases. We also made some changes to the, uh, surplus from the general fund this year with the addition of, um, fifty thousand for pickleball. But beyond that, everything is, is pretty much where it's been through, for the last two months. So if there's any questions or anything like that, we can, can answer them. Um, as I said, Ellers will, will be here, um, at the September twelfth meeting. They will present the financial management plan, which, um, is kind of a expanded version of what you've been seeing in the packet. Um, we'll also see the utilities side of things, so we'll see the impact of what the CIP does on, on that. And that's all I have.
All right, questions for Martin? See none, don't see any. Okay, all right, Martin, we're good for now. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Mike, sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to re-raise my motion that I made two weeks ago at the last meeting to defer Phase Two of the J.C. Park project. I would like to allow the portion of the project that deals with the electrical to complete Phase One to go forward, but the rest of it, I think, given our financial situation in the village, I'd like to see that deferred and reevaluated next year if construction costs are, are more affordable.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Seen one.
I can just second for discussion because I'm confused.
All right, so one, one question, Jeff, I have. What, what's all in Phase Two? And who, who, is it, is it ball fields in things that are affected? That, that concerns me if-
Well, yeah, if Phase Two involves a, a couple of things that we had to take out of Phase One, or, uh, when we had to split it in phases. It, it takes out the additional full-size playing field that was, um, to the north. It takes, it's the, um, playground area with the hard surface playground for adaptive play and the adaptive equipment. It also takes out the, uh, senior equipment that we had in there for seniors, uh, for balance, coordination and flexibility. And, um, trying to think. The, huh? Well, no, the, the multi-use field to the north and everything like that. So that's, that's taken out. Huh? And, well, and one of the things that was not even part of Phase Two yet, and we were hoping to be able to do it in Phase Two, is there's a going to be a need for a maintenance shed out there for fertilizer, for equipment to maintain the ball fields, uh, irrigation equipment, all of that type of stuff. And so, uh, that was not part of the original budget, and so we did not include that in the design at this point, but it was something that would have to be done in, in a future phase. So, um, my concern, and I've talked to Mike about this too, you know, he knows my concerns. One of my concerns honestly is there are organizations, um, that have contributed to, to this with the idea that, you know, we would try to finish Phase Two as soon as possible. And that was always the plan. When the original plan for pickleball was like, well, we would put Phase Two right away and, and just get it done. I, I think we're going to end up with an incredible park. Um, I would love to see it, um, completed for its facility because one of the things that we've heard for many, many years are, we need playing fields. That was the whole reason J.C. Park actually began, was the need to have playing fields from all of the organizations. And organizations which aren't even really represented in, represented in our village right now with fields, including rugby, lacrosse, ultimate frisbee, all those kind of, we call them, that's why we don't call them soccer fields, we just call them playing fields. And, and so that's, that's a concern I have. I did have a phone conversation the other day with a representative from soccer because we were having to move the temporary field that they're using over near the new pickleball area. And he was very concerned. He said, well, you know, I, I've been following this and I'm concerned that this is going to be cut. And, um, he said, do we need to bring, I mean, they have, they represent almost, I think, over eleven hundred kids, um, in their program. He goes, do we need to bring in a whole slew of parents into the village board meeting and, and, you know, rally for our cause as well? I said, you know, it's up to you guys, it's up to what you want to do, but, I mean, we're not here to make the decisions, you guys are.
Yeah, so, so Mike, I, I understand the concern about finances. I'm worried about them too. But I think, kind of picking up back what Jeff was saying, I, I would want to make sure that the folks that are going to be affected have a chance to come and say something to us, that we just don't, just cut them out without them having a say. So I, I'm a little concerned about that. I mean, we, you know, we saw pickleball, they saw, they came. I mean, I think they should at least have a say before us, before we just sort of just say.
The electrical, the, the plan all along was that we would put in the basis for the electrical. But honestly, the long-term plan, when we originally started planning this park, and Lisa, I'm trying to think of, just you and I are probably some of the originals on this, the long-term plan is that the lighting would likely follow several years after the completion of the park. Just we realized that it wasn't something that could be in the original budget. Um, lighting is great, but honestly, if you look at uses at nighttime, it's, it's not as much as actually having fields that kids can play on. Kids and adults too. Would you, would you agree with that, a kind of assessment?
Yeah.
All right, other, yeah, Mike?
So there are currently, uh, two soccer fields and a playground in the area that Phase Two will be in. Those fields are both in use.
Yeah, they're small.
They are small. I, I agree, they're smaller fields. Um, we value engineered our library for six million dollars. We're looking to cut costs everywhere we can, and to me, you know, we've got ground that's available, uh, we've got playing fields that are available in the village. This project is two and a half million dollars over budget. I mean, we burned our budget on Phase One. And I don't see why, um, J.C. Park is, is not available for value engineering along with our other village projects.
Yeah, Elise?
Um, another project that Martin had called out on his memo last, last meeting, um, that's park-related, that's sort of a placeholder, is the Keller Alpine West Side Park, um, number is a placeholder. And, you know, right now, our, our park plan shows that as more of an active use, but when we go through our update to our park and open space plan next year, we may find that the, the uses and the infrastructure and facilities that the community wants to see out there might be quite a bit, you know, lower cost than what we had been anticipated had we done a full slew of, um, you know, multi-use fields and underdrain and restrooms and all that. So that's another opportunity that, um, for, you know, looking at cost savings if the community decides that that space to be used differently than how our park plan has been showing it for the last couple of decades. I think that's kind of what I'm hoping our, our planning process through next year can, can guide is where, where do we kind of finish investments and where do we want to focus the new investments in parks? And, um, give what kind of facilities and scale of cost do those look like for the next couple of years?
Okay, other, yeah, Phil?
Uh, just to carry out that thought, uh, I believe the budget amount for the West Side Park is four million dollars.
Correct.
And, uh, the point you're describing, there is a, a potential that that might be scaled by as half or more.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, and I just want to point out too that J.C. Park has been value engineered to some extent because the concession stand was going to be much bigger and it did get cut down to a-
Correct.
-single story, so that was to clarify. Second thing is, uh, a question actually, um, has Oregon Soccer contributed any funds to J.C. Park yet?
They have not. I've brought that to their attention numerous times.
Okay, just for clarification.
Yeah, although baseball, softball, both contributed considerably and, and they have not, uh, we've not received any negative feedback from them when we had to base things into two phases.
Sure.
And they are getting three fields.
Huh?
And they are getting three new fields.
Exactly. Yep, yep.
All right, anybody else? So I'm, I'm just going to say again, I, I'm just not comfortable with, without the, the organizations being able to come and say something to us. I don't want to just say, you're out. That, that doesn't seem fair to me. But, so, but there is a motion? Yeah?
I'm not proposing to kill the project, I'm proposing to defer it for-
Yeah, but I, I guess my, my point is that they should still have a sit, come, be able to come and say. That's just my feeling, yeah. So there is a motion and a second?
Yeah, I, I, I'm just saying, I think it's premature to defer. That's kind of where I'm at.
Okay, yeah, Jen?
I, I'll, I, you know, I appreciate wanting to look at the capital improvement plan, but I think that there are projects maybe farther out that we could be looking at, um, repositioning versus one that technically in the work, in the works in less than six months, so.
Okay, so, so the motion and a second is to delay Phase Two, so we'll, we'll vote that out and see how it goes. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Yep, nope.
So that's one to five is what I heard, right?
Yep.
So it'd be able to-
Okay. All right.
Randy?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, Derek.
I've just got one thing on the CIP as well, and it's more of a, just starting out with a question, Jeff. As far as the, um, Oak Street Tennis Courts, uh, the grant, when was that supposed to come back again, or whether or not we got it?
I was going to check on that. I think it's in September, October, sometimes.
I think that's right, Jeff. I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, and, and they even kind of said, I mean, they were even saying, you know, be careful planning for next year, but we still are hoping to plan for next year. Um, it's, it's federal money through a state program or something, so.
Wasn't it through DNR or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we end up not, or if we end up, I guess where I'm going with this is we just voted to go ahead and put the pickleball courts back in Phase One, would it make sense to defer the maintenance, um, in the CIP a little bit further out for the tennis courts, depending on whether or not we get that grant money?
I would, I would not do the work on the tennis courts until we got the grant money. Yeah, that's, we, we can't, we don't have any funds in it. That, we're beyond maintenance of the courts. It has to be basically reconstruction of the courts.
Fairly certain, I saw it on the CIP though, as far as, uh, going forward next year?
Right.
Should that-
Right, that's a, that's a reconstruction of the court.
Okay.
Yeah.
And probably what you're not seeing with that is how it's being paid for. But each of the detail sheet shows that part of it's being paid for by the grant.
Thank you.
All right. Everybody okay? No break? Everybody's fine? Ready? We're gonna, all right. So eleven is new business. Items are for discussion, possible action. Eleven A is School Resource Officer Program Agreement between the Oregon School District and the Village of Oregon for September first, twenty-twenty-two through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Staff recommendation is to approve as presented. Martin, how do we, or, I don't know who's, anybody?
I can, I can go ahead.
You want to start?
Um, yeah, and I, I tried to be just very straightforward in my memo. I didn't know how long, late we'd be into the meeting by now. But yes, for, so over the last, uh, several years, um, me and my staff have done some extensive work with, uh, Attorney Jonah, who is the legal counsel for the school district, as well as Superintendent Leslie Bergstrom and other administration with the school to improve that, uh, School Resource Officer Program. We've made a lot of strides with the program, um, which include, uh, the operation strategies, goals and outcomes of the program. Uh, Attorney Jonah and I sat down and talked about the twenty-one, twenty-two SRO program agreement, and, uh, we both agreed to, uh, some of the minor changes highlighted in yellow. Also, there, there's updates made to Appendix A, which is the strategic planning. Uh, we talk about that through the school year. And the, uh, Appendix B, which would be the training. I just want to highlight that, um, Officer Shuey was not selected as a new SRO, told me twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. So this is just training that he's had since he was identified as the School Resource Officer, and that's listed in Appendix B. That doesn't mean he's not going to go to more. Um, he's certainly gonna, it's going to be ongoing. Um, it's great working with the school district because they have other resources that we can tap into to get him additional training, and, uh, I'm more than happy to have him attend that. Also, what I would add to Appendix B is, this again is just what he's attended, related to any type of work he would do at the school. Um, obviously, he's been a, a police officer for, I would say, seven years now, and he has been a School Resource Officer in the past as well, so he has had prior SRO training. But we certainly wanted to prioritize, uh, getting him updated on what is currently, um, some of the challenges our youth are facing. Happy to take any questions?
Is, uh, Leslie, can I have you just come up too? Because I know that there was some, we saw some emails and some concerns, and I know that you've, you've met with some folks. Can you just address that if you don't mind?
Surely. I believe there were about, um, ten emails that came from community members, and they were addressed to, uh, myself, um, the board members who are on the committee that works with, um, Chief Pagan cough on this, as well as, I think, um, Mr. Schenks and you yourself, Mr. Glush. And the emails were, um, generally not in, no, not generally, they were not in favor of an SRO agreement. However, they also offered significant, um, suggestions, feedback related to how to improve the agreement if we decided to go forward, which you can see from the unanimous, unanimous vote by the school board, that they did indeed approve it. And the suggestions were- And the suggestions were excellent and they were, um, given with, um, really the well-being of our most vulnerable students in mind. And they focused on the necessary training and adding in, um, a timeline for the training so that there was more certainty regarding what, um, the S R O would come to us with in the fall and what type of training that the S R O would have throughout the school year. In addition, um, we added a more robust feedback cycle for all stakeholders because people wanted an opportunity to weigh in throughout the school year and not just when the process or when the, um, memorandum was in the agreement process. So there was a lot of valuable feedback offered, um, with the, with the intention of, um, doing, everyone doing their best to, um, support our students who are in most need. So it was, um, thoughtful and collaborative. We didn't necessarily agree on the outcome related to the, um, memorandum and whether or not we move forward, but the feedback offered quite a bit to us in the formation of a better agreement that we will continue to improve every year, we, we decide to do it.
Okay, all right. Do you wanna, should we have a motion in a second then have some discussion, why don't we do that? Let's get it, uh, Jenna, your s- motion and Amanda, okay? All right, the discussion, Derek, I saw, I know you've got your
Actually, I'd like to make a motion to, um, on page two, paragraph three, amend the text just slightly. Um, it says, "The village and district shall allow, or shall collaborate to meet with stakeholders as needed to discuss the S R O program, the chief, lieutenant and such representatives." So on goes the paragraph, I'd like to change that sec- second sentence to, uh, read the Public Safety Committee, the chief, lieutenant and such representatives of the district as we just recently voted to put the, uh, school, um, safe, safety as part of the Public Safety Committee. I think it should be embedded within the language within this contract as well.
There.
Page two, paragraph, uh, page two of the agreement, it's on page three hundred and fourteen of the packet, um, paragraph three.
Paragraph three.
So it just changes it from the chief, lieutenant and such representatives as the district designates to the Public Safety Committee, the chief, the lieutenant and such representatives, but the, as the district, district designates.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Well, second.
Well, it's, we already got a motion on, in a second.
Well, it's an amendment.
Amendment, okay, Amanda?
amend the language.
Okay.
Okay, second amendment.
Okay.
So, one seconded the amendment?
So, question, uh, so then if we change the language, this has to go back before the school board for them to reapprove, right?
Uh, we'd have our attorney decide if it was substantive language change, it would require additional approval and, and what was just proposed, I do not believe it would.
It seems so.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Ready for vote, yeah, Mike?
What were the concerns over the S R O program?
Well, I think the, the concern was ensuring that there wasn't disproportionate impact on, on students who are, are vulnerable within our system, such as students with disabilities, um, or students who, um, have various race and ethnicity backgrounds. I think there's a, a lot of concern regarding police impact overall on those special populations. And so their question was, why does this, why do we need to have police in school if we know that there is a disparate impact on students? And so we spoke about the fact that we have a lot of things in place to ensure we're consistently reviewing the impact we're having on our students and our hope is to be able to create an additional adult within the school that people feel, um, connected to, so that when they have a problem and it's appropriate, that that person won't be, um, a completely unfamiliar scary stranger. Um, not trying to create somebody who, um, is a counselor within our schools in any way, shape or form, or even an educator within our schools, but just someone who is there and familiar and is trained in, um, trauma-sensitive crisis response and can be of service to our kids and our staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else, so we got, yeah?
Well, I have a question, so, um, what, what is the intent behind this change? Are you thinking that then the Public Safety Committee would review it and have their own discussion with all the same stakeholders present, or what's your
This recent meeting, I think it was August eighth, uh, with the school board, it was represented by President Glitch and Martin, um, for it and that was kind of my reasoning before, uh, to incorporate the school safety into the chapters, uh, one and two that we worked on as, as well within that Public Safety Committee. It's the more formalize, get a couple more people at the table to give input on the contract and what they see is maybe flaws or what could be improved. Um, on it, and I would just say to Leslie's last statement where it says, where she mentioned that it's not meant to be a counselor, um, or educator, it says right in this agreement that it's not to be a counselor and educator. So that's one of those points where I think there more, needs to be more discussion with more people. And that is the intent with my adding the Public Safety Committee on there as a additional voice in the community.
And I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, if I said that this is not meant to be a counselor or mentor, it's actually in the M O U, that's part of our efforts, so.
No, I
No, that was, that was me. But what I meant is, um, the S R O isn't a trained school counselor such as the trained school counselors we have within our student services department, nor are they trained educators, but they, they consult within those roles.
I'd just like to clarify, I mean, I appreciate the work that you guys are doing collaborating because as Gina Jonin mentioned in the meeting that there is gonna be crossover between police and schools no matter what, so this just like, this small addition to the text I find allows a little bit more input and feedback.
And I, I also think, Jenna, you, you, you've been there with us at these meetings too.
So, um, I have, but I did not know that they were, it was being discussed on the eighth, so I guess to my mind, while originally when I had the proposal, I thought the Public Safety Committee is usually invited to be things. I did not know that that, it was happening on that specific date, so if something, if putting that language in there will make sure that the committee is notified when these things are happening on our end, that would be great.
I think that was just for oversight, because you and I have gone in the past.
There's, there's been a few of those then.
Okay.
That also happened to me.
Okay.
I was not aware of the meeting.
All right, yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, so again, I'm just trying to, so that would mean that the Public Safety Committee members are invited to the joint strategic planning, or, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out what this language would mean in real life, what does that mean? Like, that If, if I could chime in, please correct me if I'm wrong, um, there's some strategic planning where we're looking at very identifiable student information, we cannot have people that are not named specifically in this M O U privy to that, in all fairness to, uh, the, this youth and their, their parents. Um, I, where, when it comes down to the wording in an M O U, that's not identifiable juvenile information, so it's just two separate things going on. There's strategic planning going on with Attorney Jonin and I, looking at data, looking at, um, specific cases we're, we're dealing with, and then there's a more broader approach. And Dr. Bergstrom, am I correct in saying?
I believe that would be the mid-year review and then the end of the year review.
Yeah.
Yes.
So is that the
The, the intent of this is basically the mid-year review and the end of, end of year review and, uh, you know, to see when this contract comes forward, if there's any changes to the contract ahead of time, so we're not two weeks before school starts looking at this contract, deciding on whether or not to change the language.
Okay, so the Public Safety Committee members would be invited to this larger mid-year discussion with multiple players. It's a separate meeting, it's not a public safety meeting, it's not a school district, it's like a special for the S R O?
Yes.
So, his, and historically, I'm sorry, I didn't
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Jumping in, um, so historically, that was what happened, was the Public Safety Committee on the village's side participated in those, those mid-year and end of year reviews and it was noticed as a Public Safety Committee meeting and, uh, at least for our end, and then you all, I can't remember what committee you
It is noted, it's noticed for us too because there are board members present.
Right, and so that, that was previously how it has worked, um, so I think that it sounds like that's what you're trying to align it to do.
Correct, and I, you know, uh, being on the committee last year, I don't recall in April having gone to that meeting.
Yeah, I've been to them in the past, but I haven't been recently and I wonder what happened with that.
So this is just kind of formalizing it in this writing that you're gonna be there.
Okay.
So now we got it fixed.
I think we got it, now I'm, I'm wrapping my head around what that means.
Matt, go ahead.
Yeah.
I just, my question is, it's been a while since I've looked at this agreement. Um, i- is there, uh, other language in the agreement, I mean, I, I, my question is, are there other places in the agreement that discuss collaboration between the village and the school district that might bring policymakers into the discussion? This, this paragraph seems focused more on nuts and bolts at a staff level, is there? And I'm just wondering if there's another provision, and you guys are talking about like other times there, because if you look at this, and this language is a little loose, so the first sentence, "The village and the district shall collaborate to meet with stakeholders as needed." Well, what does that mean?
That could be never or could be
Yeah, as they, as the, yeah, that, that's not too, too specific. Then we have, uh, "The chief lieutenant, lieutenant and such representatives the district designates will participate in joint strategic planning relating to the program," period, okay? And that's the sentence that we're talking about, and that sounds like not necessarily the same thing as the first sentence, so, in my recollection, having been involved in the discussions that put this agreement together a number of years ago is, I know there was a desire to foster increased collaboration and communication and I don't remember if there are other parts of the agreement that also get into that question or if this is the only, because I haven't looked at it for a while, only paragraph. And if the question is, you know, how and when should the Public Safety Committee be involved in, and in what? We're now getting into the weeds a little bit and, and maybe even a little more work might be necessary to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish here. And I'm sorry, I just haven't looked at the agreement for a long time, so I don't remember if there are other elements of the agreement that also speak to this question of collaboration.
Yeah, Jenna?
My, I guess the last thing I'd say, I would, I would be a little, I'm concerned about, so if what Chief Pagan cough is saying is that she currently participates in meetings with, for example, the school district's legal counsel to discuss nuts and bolts of operational things with the lieutenant who's running the program, are we now saying that whenever that kind of a meeting happens, they have to include the Public Safety Committee? That's, that's what I'm just trying to figure out, how, what is the purpose of this language and when we put that in? How is it changing things from an operational standpoint?
Yeah.
So, it, it sounds like, and if I'm misunderstanding, please let me know, um, that maybe changing that, or that what we're trying to accomplish by making this change is more operationally on how the village handles our portion of the S R O agreement, and maybe that's something that we need to do. Uh, I don't know if that would be in ordinance, resolution, whatever, at a different meeting so that, um, so that we're taking care of our side but letting this agreement go forward, um, so that we are prepared for the school year to start, but then we're identifying on our end what stakeholders means for us, is that
Yeah, so I think that's always been kind of the, the lack of clarity on, on our side is, I think when this agreement was put together, there was these joint meetings that were occurring and then it got into place and then it became, I think the, the school board had kind of like a subcommittee that was working on it and then inviting players to it. Um, and so I think we need to clarify on our side, if we're gonna have public safety, then we need to delineate that and, and make it so.
Can, can, if you scroll down to section twelve of the agreement, that's in, this, I, okay.
That's what I was remembering.
Okay.
There's a provision right now that says that the School Resource Officer Program will be assessed semi-annually jointly by the district and the village. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and I, I'll make it a, a amendment to my amendment and have the, the language entered at that point, that the, instead of the district and the village, uh, put the village Public Safety Committee in that, that place, that way we're at the program assessment portion as opposed to the nuts and bolts, but, thank you, Matt. Yep. I think that.
That makes more sense.
All right, so does somebody have to second his second amendment, or?
Okay, so
Yeah.
I'll withdraw my initial amendment.
Your amendment has changed.
So let's just get rid of the motion that's on the floor, you're, both of you are willing to do that just to keep it clean for my sanity?
Yeah.
That's the better place, now I'm clear on exactly what
Now we're in section twelve and all we have to add is the Public Safety Committee.
Well, now you want, so, let me just, so you want to say jointly by the district and the village Public Safety Committee?
Yeah.
So you just want to make it a Public Safety Committee issue because what I was hearing was that you're, there was some need here at the village to talk about, okay, if we as a village are gonna participate in this process, how are we gonna do that? And do we need to do that in the contract? We don't necessarily have to do it in the contract.
I guess I would, yeah, I would say, I don't know that we do need to do that in the contract because of the fact that depending on your board, you might have a board that wants, that everybody wants to participate in the S R O agreement and feels very passionately about that, or you might have a board that wants the Public Safety Committee to, just to handle it. I think leaving that language as is is fine, but again, I go back to, we on our end, maybe at the next meeting, need to identify who we, how we want to handle that internally, this seems, this seems more like a, a, an us thing.
Yeah, I, I think it just got derailed a little bit because I think we were, we were doing it. At least you and I were there and I think the public safety, yeah, it just got balled up a little bit, we gotta get it back on track.
Yeah.
Straighten it out.
I think that is
Yeah.
But how do we keep it back on track without putting it in here?
I, I feel better about keeping it on track if it's actually in writing.
Well, we can do it, we can do it in writing, just not in this agreement, we can do it with
A resolution.
A resolution.
Yeah, yeah, change it.
Want to do, to identify that the Public Safety Committee handles the S R O agreement, like there's, there's other ways to do it that don't keep Dr. Bergstrom
Yeah, we don't like that.
That's fine, I'll, uh, I'll save that for, I'll withdraw my motion and save it for future agenda items.
And I'm fine with that.
All right.
I'll withdraw my second.
So, so we do have, we do have a motion in a second to approve, correct?
No, we have a motion that has been withdrawn now, so now we're back to the original motion to approve the agreement.
And, and we have a second, okay.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Here we go.
Everybody approved, right?
We got there.
Good discussion.
Okay. All right, we're on eleven B, uh, task order number seventeen with Town and Country Engineering for Engineering Design and Construction Services, uh, for the twenty twenty-three Washington Street and State Street Reconstruction, uh, project in the amount of a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. I will say that I know the neighbors are very anxious, anxiously and patiently been waiting for this one.
Anxiously been waiting.
Anxiously.
Not always
Not pa- no, that's right. All right, so can we get a motion, do we, yeah, we still have, motion in second, all right, Amanda and Mike, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Let's go to C, which is task order number eighteen, Town and Country Engineering, Engineering Services for a sewer system analysis for Oak Street, interceptor in the amount not to exceed sixty-five hundred dollars. You get a motion in a second, Amanda, you get a second from Derek, okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. D is request from staff to modify village, uh, hour, village hall business hours. Martin, you want to just say something quick on that, or, it was in our packet?
Yeah, so, this is something that I talked to, um, some of the department heads up here and village hall staff about putting the, our current summer hours, um, and making them permanently all year round. So for summer hours, we close at noon on Fridays, um, staff continues to work, um, through four-thirty P M, um, even though we're closed, and I think, uh, I lay out there a couple of reasons, um, you know, the ability to, uh, focus on work without distractions and then the second one there with being able to flex schedules and giving staff the opportunity to, to leave early, um, when appropriate.
Okay. You want a motion, yeah?
I think you do, right, to approve that?
Second, okay, Amanda's making a motion to approve, can I get a second? It's either Mike or Derek. All right, Derek? Or Phil, he walked in, he doesn't know what we was talking about, but
Second, third.
All right, all right, any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Uh, ten E, or eleven E is future agenda items, gives, uh, item gives the board members opportunity to place items, uh, and new business on future agenda for discussion. Anybody got anything?
All right, Derek?
As just discussed, I'd like to, uh, As just discussed, I'd like to revisit the SRO meetings and a resolution to make sure that at least the Public Safety Committee is at the meeting regarding the SRO contract.
Okay. Anybody else? Twelve, report of village officers, village administrator report, that was in our packet from Martin. Twelve B, village department head staff or consultant. Anybody over here have anything?
I just want to, I just want to thank the election workers for another election. I did get notice today that there is a recount for Congressional District Two, so they said that we will probably start that on Saturday, so.
Okay.
For the, the Republican primary.
All right. All right, anybody else? Seen anything? Okay. Twelve C is village board comments. We'll try to keep it to three, three minutes. I'm looking at Mike. No, I'm just kidding, not really. All right, anybody, yeah, Jenna?
I liked the consent agenda.
Yeah, I do too.
Little plug for that.
Let's put all of it on consent, right? All right, anybody else? Yeah, Derek has got his hand up.
I'd just like to kind of speak in village board comments tonight about Trustee Wunsch's letter to the editor, since I've been asked in the past to go ahead and bring my issues to the board as opposed to engaging with media, I'll, I'll do it now. Just in reading his letter, I found it interesting that the claim that he's respecting the process is he proclaimed in a meeting prior to the public input that he wouldn't vote for any land, any development of land on two forty-nine North Main Street. I'd also like to offer a correction to the letter, as Phil didn't state that we paid one point two million. It states that if carried to term, the village would, would pay one point two million dollars on this property, which makes me kind of wonder if you're disputing the, the facts that were presented to us by village staff. And I guess, you know, my last comment on this, okay, there's a bit on there that I do agree with, is that we need to be committed to looking for cost-saving measures and not necessarily taking on non-essential projects, and probably look at reducing the borrowing and also mitigating losses from unsuccessful investments.
All right, anybody else? Three minutes, Amanda.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's just a, I'm not trying to start discussions, this isn't a response or anything like that, but I have to say, I was disappointed to see letters from Village President Glisch and Trustee Van Kampen in the Oregon Observer. I think we've set a process for public input with surveys and things, and it feels very much like, like some trustees have made up their minds already, and what's the point of asking for public input then? I just thought it was, we got to stop doing this stuff in the Oregon Observer. We just, I'm, that's just my opinion, I think it's not appropriate. I think we should discuss things at the board meetings and that, that we already are public servants and we have this, you know, a pulpit, basically, and we need to, to conduct our business in the meetings instead of trying to sway public opinion outside of the meetings. That's for, that's for community organizers, that's for the public to do, that's, that's not for us to do. I don't, I don't like this, and I would like to see that trend stop. There, said my piece.
You said it, yeah.
If I could, and I, there's a bit of Amanda's statement there that I agree with, in particular, apart the, the bit that we have a process and, you know, part of, and I actually discussed with you at the night of the public input, part of what was disappointing about that public input, input session was there was trustees actively advocating for positions as opposed to just sitting there and listening. There's some of us who are going to get to vote on what happens on this land just by virtue of where we're sitting. Some of us have a say just based on by geographic location of our homes, and then to go ahead and also give our commentary and input within that setting, it seems like it's tipping the scales a bit. I would have very much preferred to see the trustees, I mean, I made it a point just to walk around and just kind of look at the tables and see whatever everyone was saying. I found it quite interesting, there was a lot of overlap between the tables. It was a little disappointing to see that played out in that setting.
All right. Let's go to thirteen, announcements miscellaneous business. Thirteen A is village president appointments, the village board, standing committees, that was in your packet, and that's a, because of the, you know, we changed chapters one and two a little bit, so I think we, we need a motion second.
No.
No, we don't? Okay. So I don't think anybody's surprised, the same stuff that you were on, so no problem there. Thirteen B, upcoming meetings and events, I think we had that in our packet to get in our calendars. Thirteen C was thank you from Oregon Brooklyn Optimist Club for splash, splash pad contribution of ten thousand dollars. And then last but not least, we'll take fourteen, adjournment. All right, Mike and Derek, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done. Thank you.